Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. It's 6:32 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent one in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be opened at the public both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are printed on the agenda of the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in-person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City events announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in-person, please, again, email the city recorder prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, and city of residence. Individuals attending in-person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Tammy Bannick, city recorder, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Let's stand for the flag, please. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin tonight's meeting with a special presentation. Chief Schmerber, do I turn this over to you or to Jackie?
Good evening, Council Mayor.
I don't mind. Turn the microphone on so it'll be recorded.
How's that?
That's great.
Does that work? Tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity with Administrator Betts to introduce you, Ian Dornfield, our newest police officer. He was born and raised, a little bit about him, he was born and raised in Gresham, Oregon. He attended Mount Hood Community College and has been focusing on the current law enforcement for quite some time now. He's a cadet with Gresham Police Department, and we took him as a safety and security officer with Legacy Health. So we welcome Ian. Where's Ian at? Come on up here, Ian. As Ian comes up, away from work, he enjoys camping, gaming, and spending time with family, and would like to get back into reading. And I encourage reading, of course. At this point, at this point, I'm going to let Administrator Betts provide the office. So if you can step right up here.
All right, so I'm going to let you have this, and you can follow along after me. Want to raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Ian Dornfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Gladstone.
And the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And the rules and the regulations of the Gladstone Police Department.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
Discharge of the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
In and for the city of Gladstone.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Administrator Betts, and welcome aboard, Officer Dornfeld.
And now that you're sworn in as a police officer, you get your badge. So the badge, what we're going to present, it's a symbol of a police badge, right? But the badge is more than just a symbol. It holds a measure of respect and accountability. This badge also represents the importance of building trust within the community, being a safe resource, and it's an indication of willingness to protect the people you serve at all costs. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who would you like to pin on your badge?
My mother, Sandy.
Come on up. Now, who doesn't have a vest on? I will burn my head. Trust me, I will do that. But can you introduce who you have here, please?
So we just came up with Sandy Dornfield. We have, in my chair is Chase Dornfield, my brother's son. Next to Sandy is Mark Dornfield, my father. And we have Ginger Arizaz, my girlfriend. And we have Parker Dornfield, my brother's daughter, and my other brother's daughter. And then, of course, Governor.
I was waiting for that one. Congratulations, Sandy.
All right. Administrator Betts and Councilor, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes or to the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
I bring in a correction.
Yes.
It's simple, but I just would wanted to pull the minutes.
You want to, oh, the minutes of the last meeting? Okay.
Right.
All right. So when we get to the, here we are, the consent agenda. Normally, we approve these seven items, the regular minutes of our November 14th meeting, approval of October bank balances, budget report for the period ending October 31, approval of October check register, legal costs for projects on October, department head monthly reports for November, and certify the results of the November 7 special election on the vacant city council position. Counselor Roberts has requested that we pull the approval of the regular minutes, so we will do that separately. And is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. Items two through seven of the consent agenda are approved as presented. Counselor Roberts, regarding the minutes.
It's a minute detail. I just noticed from business from the council, my portion about what I spoke was not included.
We'll try to go back and add that.
Yep, we will get that added. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tammy.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th minute as amended with the addition of Counselor Roberts' comments on business from the council?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So will you, will you put the new minutes up on, on the, where our agenda is, once they're corrected?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Even though the minutes normally appear as part of the agenda, once they've been approved, they show as a separate line on the website under minutes for this committee. Not always for the others, but for this committee, that's the way we do it, for this council. So, all right, it's been moved.
Has not been.
Has not been moved. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Conditionally upon those amendments, I move to approve.
All right. Counselor Roberts has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Counselor, was that Counselor Garlington seconding down there? Oh, Counselor Riekel. Oh, I knew I heard that voice sound a little electronic. Very good. It's been moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Riekel. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The minutes with the addition requested have been approved. All right. Correspondence. I received some correspondence regarding one of the items on our agenda tonight. That's item 10. I believe it went to everyone in the council, so we may be making reference to that when we get to that item. Administrator Betts, do you have any more correspondence for tonight related to our agenda?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the report from the Clackamas Fire District.
Hello, city council, mayor. Thanks for having us. My name is Drew Kinnaman. I'm a lieutenant with Clackamas Fire, and we're serving at the Gladstone Fire Hall. This, I'm sure you know, is Chief Stewart. I've got some numbers for you real quick, just to run down how busy we've been. Within the city of Gladstone, there has been 187 calls for service. Engine 322, which is your local fire engine, we responded to 169 of those within the city limits. On top of that, we responded for a total calls volume in the month of November of 219 calls for Engine 322. So a pretty busy house. We're the second busiest engine within Clackamas Fire District, and we're sitting right here in your backyard, and we're happy to serve you guys. With that, along, we've participated with, the district calls it Op Santa Gladstone, kind of have something a little bit different, but there's three days worth of that, and we had Engine 322 in that parade. For at least a section of that, when it was our turn, we got four calls during that time period. So to say that we're a busy engine, we're a busy engine. So other than that, we're sitting right there, right off Portland Avenue, right next to the new library, which can be a little loud sometimes, but we are your engine company, and we're happy to be here.
I think eventually they'll say, you're a little loud.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Drew. So just a couple things. It hasn't been too long since I've seen most of you. Let's see, going on in the district, I think I'd focus on a couple of things, and one of that would be just the levy implementation. So for us, we passed that levy in May, and we've got some, some big commitments out there, including getting some, some alternative response vehicles, making sure we have the right resource, the right size. We picked up two apparatus used from a, from a insurance company that used to do some private fire insurance work. So we got some really good deals on those, picked them up out of Nevada. Those are just being received, and it'll take a while to get those into service, but we plan to get those in service as quickly as we can. We have our next, we have an academy coming up, I believe, starting the end of February, first week of March, which will be, again, helping to add those firefighters that we've committed to, to bring into the community, some of which will be supporting Station 13, which is out in Clark's, which will be converting from a all-volunteer response station to a career fire station. So that'll be being able to provide 24/7 firefighter paramedic coverage. And as with all of our stations, we have some that are all volunteer, and then we have ones that we, we call career, but our volunteers are certainly welcome to ride as an extra additional firefighter on those when they have time available. And some of our career companies are also augmented currently by apprentice firefighters. We don't count them as staffing. They're still in the learning mode and position, but they do provide some additional capacity and training and, and building that future workforce, not just for us, but the Oregon State. So that's fantastic. But you can imagine that as we implement levy, add firefighters, that's additional logistics pieces. We're working on, we were just meeting today on some capital needs. So that fire station, which has been housing folks at nights and weekends, could come into 24/7 station, just need some other upgrades, some other pieces put in there. So we're working on those pieces. And then we're also looking at where do we want to put people and apparatus? We have plans in place. We've done some analysis, but we also implemented a new program called Dark Horse that is a emergency services analytics and predictive modeling program. So we're starting to implement them with our GIS consultant, which will give us not just the historical look about things, but also being able to anticipate where future call load will be, based on population projections, zoning, those types of things. So we're looking at a whole host of ways to implement that and use it a little bit more effectively and more rapidly to look at data. So looking forward to seeing that and bringing you some information on those as the months go on, and we implement that about what's specific to Gladstone and what our community looks like as a whole. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
But just to clarify, for residents of Gladstone listening to tonight's meeting, your references to the levy and the apparatus and the personnel, those are for the Clackamas Fire District levy, which passed in, was it May, I believe it was?
Yes, it was May, and yes, you are correct.
Okay, so, yeah, because I don't want to, we just passed another levy here in November. Your popular group. And so the people support you, and, and all that apparatus and personnel is coming out of the one. Gladstone voters did not vote on the Clackamas Fire District levy because we are technically not a part of that district, because we had our own city fire department for many years. But we have this contractual agreement with you to help provide services for us. And the levy that we did pass in November helps the city with the funding of our commitment to that contract. So in all ways, we're supporting one another financially, and it's good to get that update on the expansion of both personnel and apparatus, because we know from the lieutenant's report, you are serving a variety of areas and a lot of calls and doing it in a very efficient way. So are there questions from council members? Counselor Garlington?
I just have one. I noticed on here that it says fire incidents in Gladstone, none in November. Maybe you could tell us what not to do so that we can keep that going in the paper. Like, don't use your stove as a heat, as a furnace. Call for help somewhere to get your heat back on.
There's so many fire, fire safety tips, and we've been fortunate. There weren't any fire calls in October or in November, I believe, for the city of Gladstone, which is, which is fantastic. That hasn't always been the case.
Yeah.
You know, it's just looking at some recent pieces and, and some seasonal pieces. Certainly, it's, it's the time of season for Christmas trees. If folks are doing that, making sure that they're, they're well-watered. If you're using a natural Christmas tree, keep them away from sources of heat. If you're using other items within your home for heating, some people still have wood burning stoves, making sure you keep combustibles away from there. And reading instruction manuals help. We've had some incidents recently where, you know, people are using equipment or tools or charging batteries or incorrect batteries with the wrong chargers, those types of things. There's, there's, the litany of lists goes on, but cooking, heating are big, big ones this year.
Well, let's keep safe, everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Gar, or Counselor Alexander.
So that's a lot of calls, turn 19. You have paramedics. So what I want to, I've heard, the community's been asking me some questions, and I don't know the statistics. So could you tell me about how many times on those calls you have to administer Narcan?
I don't have those numbers offhand. I'll ask the lieutenant to kind of speak from his practical experience, but we don't have the run data in front of us. Yeah, I, again, I don't, I don't have hard numbers for you. There are certain areas that, that that is more prevalent than others. And so on the McLaughlin, we'll call that corridor, that's kind of a higher prevalence area. We've been seeing a little bit more of it. But as far as hard numbers for you, I, I'm sorry, I don't have hard numbers.
Okay.
I would say more than in the past.
More, okay. Now, I see it's rising. I mean, I know that, but I just.
From, from my anecdotal experience, yes.
And how much does one, one administration of that cost?
Again, I wish I had that number. You might have it. I have the luxury of pushing a button and it shows up so that we can serve you guys. That's, that's, that's the beauty of working for Clackamas Fire.
All right. Then the last question would just be, you ever have to give any, any one individual more than one dose?
So, yes, I guess, in summary, yes, depends on, on how much narcotics a person took and, and what their tolerance level is. And all that is varied on, on the user.
Okay. And so you, would I just check with you later to get those numbers, or?
Yeah.
Some people are comparing them, and I just wanted to know how we were doing.
Yeah, we'd be happy to provide any data that we can to support, you know, your, your informing the council or informing individuals within the city or on the council. I do know that Chief Huffman has been in, in touch with Chief Schmerber recently about this. We were talking about it maybe Monday, and he was working on some data pieces with, I don't know if it was spurred by a question from council or from the public, but I know he's working on getting some of that information together to, to share with the city of Gladstone, perhaps at a higher level. But I'll work with City Administrator Betts and Chief Schmerber, make sure that we drill down and get the answers that you're looking for.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councilors, any other questions?
I'll just quickly thank you guys again, this time again for your preparedness and your, all the words escaping me now, but getting ahead of things before they're happening. You guys, you're so more, so much more proactive than reactive, and we constantly see that in all the reports you bring us. So thank you for bringing that to our city as well. Thank you much.
All right. Lieutenant Chief, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We always get a in-person report from Clackamas Fire. We get good printed reports from all our departments in the city that are part of, and they are included in our monthly regular meeting agenda. So I always commend those to you, to learn more about public works and police and, and planning, all those things that are going on. They're right there for us on a regular basis. We move to our regular agenda. We have four items. The first is Resolution 1231, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution 1228, which was the old fee schedule, utility rate changes, right-of-way minimum charges, adding public works engineering fees, and community center suggested donation fee changes. Then our next item will be Resolution 1232, a resolution adopting a policy for system development charges, SDCs, calculations in connection with commercial to residential conversions. This is required by House Bill HB 2984. Then, Oregon Department of Transportation ODOT Local Agency Certification Program supplemental project agreement between ODOT, Clackamas County, and the city of Gladstone to deliver the Trolley Trail Bridge project through the Local Agency Certification Program. And then finally, we have appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. There are several. So will we begin with item number 10, Resolution 1231? Call on staff to introduce this for us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, city council. Like the mayor said, tonight, we're going to ask you to approve a resolution updating our master fee schedule. We typically bring this to you twice a year, once in July and now in December to implement into January. So the areas of where we're looking to increase are in our utility rate increases, which we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about, our right-of-way minimum charges, engineering fees, and the community center suggested donation fees. To be, to be clear, the city cannot charge fees to anybody in the city unless it is in our master fee schedule. So that is why we bring it to you regularly to update those fees. So we have our finance consultant on Zoom tonight, and she's going to start introducing the utility rate increases.
Thank you. Mayor and council, included in the master fees and charges request before you tonight is the budgeted increase of 4% for the water, sewer, and stormwater base rates, along with the, excuse me, the block rates for water consumption. The city has been able to maintain a conservative rate of increase the past two years in the previous biennium budget and has forecasted the same for this year, 2024, and also 2025 to complete the 2325 biennium budget. These increases are necessary to maintain an even funding source for these utilities and to provide for system upkeep and improvements. At this time, the pass-through rates for Wes and Oak Lodge Sewer have not been increased at all. Those are increased on the fiscal year on July 1. Nothing is affecting those this time. The average residential billing based on six CCFs, the average of consumption, will increase $3.64 per month. That equates to an overall increase for a West Sewer customer of 3% and an Oak Lodge Sewer customer of 2% once those pass-through rates are factored in. City Administrator Betts has further information on the infrastructure improvements to be funded by these increases. And if you have any further questions of need, please let me know.
And I think it's important that we talk a little bit about where this money is going to be spent. Any type of increases right now in a community are difficult, and the city has spent a lot of time for the, the past several years getting to this point tonight. And so just to provide a little bit of background, Gladstone invested little or nothing in maintaining, updating, or replacing infrastructure for many years. Small or no increases in some years meant Gladstone's rates didn't keep up with inflation. That led to severe deficiencies in the integrity of the utility systems. To address these problems, the Gladstone City Council committed to catching up on infrastructure needs to maintain the health and long-term vibrancy of the city. These rate increases give us a program and funds for ongoing replacement. After extensive public outreach by the former city council, the significant rate increases began in 2018 and have stabilized to where the city only needs to increase rates by 4% for inflationary purposes. The rate increases will allow the city of Gladstone to complete the following projects: continue to operate and maintain our infrastructure, to comply with state and federal regulations and avoid costly penalties from DEQ, to replace water, sewer, stormwater infrastructure on a 100-year cycle, beginning with spending $2.2 million on addressing inflow and infiltration deficiencies in the city's stormwater and sewer system. We are currently out to bid for that project, and we're bringing back it to council for approval in the first part of 2024. We'll be spending $750,000 for the rehabilitation of the 82nd Drive pump station that was built in the 1970s. We anticipate to complete this by the end of 2025. $3 million for the Sherwood Forest asbestos pipe replacement. We will begin construction in 2025. There will be $750,000 towards capital improvements for water and sewer systems in the overlap area with Oak Lodge Water Services. We have to complete those projects between 2024 and 2027. And we have allocated $400,000 for the Evergreen Line storm line replacement to complete that by the end of 2024. We understand that these rates can be difficult. The city does have a customer assistance program that offers discounts for low-income households, and we have that information on the city's website. So before we have discussion regarding these rates, I'm going to go ahead and allow our Public Works Director to talk about the other proposed increases in the master fee schedule.
Thank you, Jackie. In October of 2016, city council approved a technical plan review development engineering fees based on the total construction cost for public improvements and work completed within the city right of way. The city wants to encourage development, though the city has an obligation to be fiscally responsible. Engineering costs for projects that do not come to fruition are costly expenditures, which should not be the responsibility of the residents of Gladstone. Currently, engineering expenses are funded out of Public Works budget because of city contracts for engineering services. Public Works is proposing that the city begin collecting engineering fees for private and commercial development. These fees, in conjunction with our technical plan review development engineering fees, will place a financial obligation on the developer and not the residents of Gladstone. These fees are, are detailed in the master fee schedule on pages 10-8 and 10-10. These fees are, are detailed in the master fee schedule on pages ten-eight and ten-ten.
Darren, did you wanna highlight the right-of-way minimum charges?
Uh, yeah, I can, so the right-of-way minimum charges, um, this is gonna be a, a standard three percent uh, increase going forward. Um, these are for uh, fees that are for right-of-way. Not licensing, but for right-of-way permitting. So when somebody comes in to do um, you know, sewer line replacement or something like that, those fees will go up three percent.
Thank you, and then the, the final suggested increase are, are for donations of fees, and in our master fee schedule. Uh, the city had, offers congregate meals and transportation at the Community Center. They have not been increased uh, in years, and so we are recommending that. The, the meal donation for sixty years and over is increased from three dollars to four dollars. And the van trip donation applies to all participants regardless of their age, and the suggested donation. Is two dollars each way instead of one dollar each way. So those are the increases proposed before you tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions, and I also believe you have public testimony tonight.
Thank you, Administrator Betts, thank you, Kathy Brecker and Darren Caniparoli for uh, briefing us on all those issues. Uh, they are all part of one uh, you know, uh, master schedule where we've highlighted the, the changes. However, as a council, we don't have to approve all of them, we can, we can pick and choose, and uh, if we choose to. So um, let me, let me get, let's get questions out of the way from council first, and then we will entertain public testimony on this issue. Uh, Councilor Alexander.
I just like to, I think it, I think the whole thing's good because we're keeping it down to four percent, I think that's great. It's uh, all the other cities you look around are much more than that, they, they do go higher. I like, I like that the city doesn't pay for the uh, you know, for the public works, that we're not paying for the engineering stuff that don't come to fruition. And the last part is just really a donation, you know what I mean, so I, I, I like the whole, whole thing, that's all I wanna say.
All right, thank you. Other councilors, questions, comments?
I have one question.
Yes.
The, the trips that the uh, the Community Center provides that go on Fridays. Is that this two dollars, or is that a different amount?
That is an adventure trip, which is a separate cost. And it's not included in our master fee schedule because it is a separate trip based on where they're going for how long. So this is when we, for instance, pick up somebody to come to the center. Pick up somebody to take him to their doctor's appointment and to go back home, so they're for trips around the Gladstone area.
Thank you.
I just have a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Um, under the engineering fees, um, it's listed as five percent, two-point-five percent for plan review and. And then it's cut off a little bit, um, Mr. Caniparoli, I'm wondering if you can just explain what text is cut off and. Um, just clarify the five percent that's listed as a percentage of construction costs, correct?
Give him the page number.
Oh yeah, apologies, it's um, page ten-nine.
So the, the five percent, there's um, two-point-five percent for planned review. And another two-point-five percent, if there's a second plan review for a total of five percent. That's what's missing there, and then if there's any additional um, planner reviews that are needed, that's an additional three percent on top of the five percent. This is currently uh, in the, in the fee schedule, it just moved from where it was before to this new section.
Thank you for clarifying.
I mentioned earlier, we'd received some correspondence on that issue from a citizen, uh, I won't read the entire letter, but uh, her, her comment addressed to. Each member of the council, I have to say that I was in shock when I saw that you were all raising our water another four percent. When you just did that not long ago, uh, you literally make, are making it where people have to move out of the city. When I sat and listened to you at City Council last month, you talked about having diversity and everything in our city and in our council, but how can you do that when no one but rich people? Are going to end up being able to live in this city anymore. Um, so uh, we got that one, one letter from a citizen, and we have another comment. Uh, someone requested to speak this evening on this issue.
We actually have two, and the first one is going to be Jim Nelson.
Is Mr. Nelson here in person or on Zoom?
I do not see him. On Zoom.
Okay.
I thought he was going to be in person, so. If Mr. Nelson is on Zoom, please raise your hand, but I do not see him.
Okay.
So uh, the next will be Charity Powell.
Hi, if you push the button on the speaker, it will stay on, there you go.
Great. Um, hi, my name's Charity Powell, and I'm a Gladstone resident, um, and I did wanna speak to the utility rates um, increase. Um, I'm totally understand the need to raise utility rates, so that's not an issue, I just wanted to make sure that as. Um, and I would like to learn more, cuz it um, sounds like Kathy maybe has already addressed this, but for some of us. That live in Gladstone, we are Oak Lodge Water District, and so we are feeling the increase of both um, systems. And so I just wanted to make sure that our board was aware of that, as we're looking at rate increases and. Both, both systems have been neglected over the years and both have really big needs for increases, our big jump happened in two thousand and eighteen. There's recently just happened, so I was actually able to talk to Kathy this summer after I spoke at the Oak Lodge Water District, just about the impact. To those of us that are kind of using both systems and both services. So it disproportionately raises our bill compared to other Gladstone residents, so um, in the seven years that we've lived here, our water bill has doubled. Um, because we're, it, we're feeling the impact of both systems, so just wanted to bring that to awareness, and I am. I'm, I understand the need for increased. Rates to address inflation and appreciate the effort going into it, so.
Thank you, uh, you know, Kathy Brecker's comment a little earlier that these rate increases amount to two percent of, of, of the bill of people who have Oak Lodge. And three percent of those who have Wes makes it sound like you're getting the better deal, the actual absolute amount is the same. It's a lower percentage because your basic sewer bill is somewhat higher than those who live uh, in the West District. So you're taking a, a fraction of a larger number, which means a smaller percentage. But um, we are aware of that difference, the fact that we have two different sewer districts. That overlap our city, and some people pay one rate and some people pay the other.
Yeah.
And uh, with, with infrastructure, as you know, the more people you have in the system, sometimes the more cost-efficient it is. And uh, uh, some of us are lucky to live in the portion of the city where we have a very cost-efficient system. Supported by ratepayers from other parts of this county, and some of you uh, have, are in the more difficult. Uh, a difficult situation, but thank you for sharing your comments tonight.
For sure, and Oak Lodge, you know, they're working on like water filtration systems to protect our rivers, and I'm fully in support, it just is. We definitely feel the, the weight of the increases, so.
We hear you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Charity.
All right, are there additional comments or questions from councilors before we consider uh, our action tonight, Counselor Cook?
Yeah, I have a question that may be for Administrator Betts, so for folks who wanna take advantage of the low-income assistance. For um, you know, taking care of water bills that they may otherwise struggle to pay. How are residents informed about this, is this included in their water bills, if they miss a payment, um, are they informed about it at that time? Um, how are, are people being aware, made aware of this resource?
Kathy can probably answer that better, I will say what you just said, yes, that's happening, it's on the city's website. We have information here as well, uh, Kathy, are there other ways that we're informing people?
We do publish it in our newsletter on a regular basis, and then our utility billing clerk. She's very good about following up with people that are running um. Uh, delinquent and/or in need of some type assistance, and we, we have a, a very strong oversight. Over our uh, aging accounts in that way. And so if we feel that there is somebody that is, needs to be, um, that we need to reach out to, we do that, we are proactive about it. And uh, there are, all of the regulations are listed on the website as far as what people need to do to qualify for it. We basically use a very standard HUD level of uh, income. So that, you know, we're consistent with the other cities in the area and the other uh, agencies that offer these types of, of assistances. And just, you know, anything that we can do to inform our residents and our bill payers of. Help that is there.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Is there, would someone like to make a motion regarding uh, this agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution one-two-three-one, repealing Resolution one-two-two-eight. And adopting a new master fee schedule.
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Roberts. Any more discussion from members of the council? All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution is passed. Staff, thank you for bringing this to us in a comprehensive way and covering all these issues in, in one motion. Um, as, as Counselor Alexander expressed earlier, they all make good sense, we believe. We, we never like to raise fees, we take no pleasure from it, but we have that responsibility to maintain this system. And despite the current level of inflation and construction costs and supply chain issues and shortage of employees. We're still gonna try to make do on the four percent increase. All right, our next item uh, is consideration of a resolution adopting a specific policy for system development charge calculations. Staff.
This sounds like a specific policy for the city attorney to give you an overview on.
Chad, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council, uh, Mayor Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office, specific being the key word in that sentence. So as you may know, uh, during the last legislative session, there was a lot of attention paid to affordable housing and housing issues generally. One of the bills that the legislature passed was House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, which makes it easier to convert commercial buildings into residential buildings. As part of that House bill, they have uh, several various provisions about implementing how that process is gonna work. And one of those relates to system development charges, um, as you know, system development charges are charges that the city imposes. On uh, various systems when there's an impact on the capacity towards that system. So basically, we charge a fee to developers to say that you're impacting our system, and that allows us to increase capacity in those systems. Um, House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four requires a specific policy in order to charge SDCs. For uh, the conversions from commercial to residential properties. So what you have before you tonight is a resolution adopting that specific policy. It basically just implements the existing policy that we have in the city, it doesn't really make a substantive change. But it is just adopting a specific policy under House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, so there, there's no questions about our ability to impose SDCs. When these conversions or if these conversions happen. How that will work is basically, we provide a credit for the previous SDC that was paid, so when the commercial building was. Developed, they paid an SDC at the commercial rate. And then what we're doing now is we provide a credit for that commercial rate, to the extent that the residential rate is higher. Then we just charge the difference between what was previously paid and what the current residential rate is. That's the way it exists in our, our current law, and that's the ordinance that's uh, that, I'm sorry, the provision of municipal code that's referenced in the resolution. Um, so again, all we're doing is just saying, we're gonna use our current municipal code provisions as the specific policy for House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four. Again, no substantive change, it's just sort of following the procedures of House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, so we can impose SDCs if one of these conversions happens. With that, I'll uh, answer any questions that you may have, but I would urge adoption of the resolution, so uh, you can move forward with SDCs as needed.
All right, councilors, any questions? Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to adopt Resolution twelve thirty-two, adopting a specific policy for system development charge. SDC calculations in connection with commercial to residential conversions as required by House Bill twenty-nine eighty-four.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Alexander, any more questions or discussion? All right, uh, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Jacobs and uh, Public Works Director Caniparoli for bringing this for us, the resolution passes. We move on to the next item, uh, item twelve, I believe it is, uh, this is an ODOT agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very complex, multi-jurisdictional agreement that we're asking you to sign tonight, and basically. This will allow us to continue moving forward with the work that we've been doing on replacing the Trolley Trail Bridge. That fell into the river in twenty fourteen. Your staff report is uh, has a, a summary, I, I do wanna go over it a little bit. Because it's been a few years since we've done any work on this. And so back in twenty seventeen, the city was awarded funding from the Surface Transportation Programs. Which are regional funds allocation to study first the feasibility of replacing that bridge. We did a very public process with that, Clackamas County led that phase because they are what's called a certified local agency. They have engineers on staff that are able to produce that work, the City of Gladstone does not. We did some extensive public outreach and uh, there are three concepts that are in your packet. And in twenty twenty, we had a open house with the former city council, and that we revealed the options. And then we had people that publicly voted on them, and in your packet, you will see there is three options. For replacing that bridge, and there are various dollar prices, but this was back in twenty twenty dollars. So what you have in your packet is reflective at the time when we finished the feasibility. During that process, the city also applied for more funding from Metro's Regional Flex Funds. To move on with the second phase, which is the engineering and environmental phase. And in twenty twenty, we were awarded one million, two-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-dollar, eight-hundred dollars to complete that phase. This was the same time that COVID happened, everything was put on hold as far as ODOT moving through the contracting phase of that. We're finally back to a place where Metro, ODOT, Clackamas County and the city is poised to move forward on this. And the first step is for the City of Gladstone to allow me to assign, to uh, approve or to sign this agreement. It would then go to Clackamas County Commissioners, so they could authorize their staff to complete the work. And then it would be signed through ODOT. This phase that we're talking about would include a portion of the preliminary engineering activities up to thirty percent. On refining the preferred bridge options and get us to a final preferred option. They would also update the costs, and there's quite a bit of environmental work that will need to be done, it's estimated to take about eighteen to twenty months. For this process. The city's match requirement for the full hundred percent of this phase is approximately a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Which we currently have budgeted for in our budget, however, because we're only completing thirty percent. We will only need to match forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-seven dollars at this time. Staff is recommending that you go ahead and, and move forward with this process, I will also share that the third phase is obviously construction. The city has not secured those funds yet, however, we do have support from Metro Regional Flex Funds. This project is on the Regional Transportation Plan, it is vetted with Clackamas County and their C-four Committee. And our Economic Development Coordinator is working uh, with our grant writers to try and secure funds. For the replacement phase of that. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I do have one, um, about a year ago, I received a letter from a citizen who was under the impression that federal funds. federal funds have been allocated for the construction of the bridge. What would likely be the source of the funds for the actual construction if it gets to that point?
I think they would be federal funds. As you recall, several years ago, Metro went out for a bond, and the Trolley Trail Bridge construction project was part of that. That bond failed, so now we are trying to secure funds from regional flex funds, which is administered through federal budgeting that comes down to the state, then to the cities to do that. It's likely going to be federal infrastructure dollars that we're able to access for the construction of the project.
Okay, so that part is for the construction, but what we're voting on tonight is this next phase, this engineering and environmental.
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions from council members or comments?
Jackie, this is Veronica, I just have one quick question on something that I noticed in here. On pages 12-2 through 12-4, where it kind of shows the design ideas, the first two list like an estimated cost in $2020, but then on 12-4, it says 6.6 in today's dollars. Is today's dollars, should that have been corrected to $2020, or is that the current?
No, you're correct, that is also $2020.
Okay. I just thought maybe it was something that got missed when it was updated, thank you.
And while you're on that, because I did have a conversation with, with Councilor Alexander, the bridge options look similar in option one and two. And really, what the difference is, is that one is a precast concrete girder and the other is a steel girder. So that is very hard to see in these pictures, but it's the material that's being used for them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and part of the reason we have environmental concerns, well, for a variety of things, but some of them involve actually digging into the river itself, the bed of the river, and that requires a little more engineering and does have a different impact on the, the environment of the river. But those decisions on which option, that's still down the line, and that could be a result of the part we're being asked to approve tonight. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll give it a shot.
All right.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that City Council authorized the city administrator to enter into an agreement for the Oregon Department of Transportation Local Agency Certification Program Supplemental Project Agreement, ODOT, Clackamas County, and the city of Gladstone to deliver the Trolley Trail Bridge project through the local agency certification program.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, and I said mistakenly resolution, it's not a resolution, it's just a recommended, or an action authorization for the city administrator to enter into this. It's been moved by Council Alexander, seconded by Councilor Huckabee. Any other questions or discussion? Did we have anyone who requested to speak on this item?
We did not.
Okay. Former Mayor Stempel is here, I know you pushed this project through from the beginning and helped get some of the initial grants to help it get started. So I'm sure you're happy to see it, you were unhappy to see it slow down during COVID, as we were everything else, but it's continuing on. So thank you for your involvement in, in dreaming this up and finding the sources to make it a potential reality for us. All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilor Cook.
Yes.
Councilor Riekel.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Councilor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the recommendation is approved. The next items on our agenda are all basically falling in the same category, appointments of citizens to committees, commissions, boards, and committees of the city. This is one of those difficult things that we do. We are required to, to vote openly on our decisions. Years ago, there was a vacancy on the city council, the other six members of the city council needed to appoint someone, they wrote down their votes on a little piece of paper and passed them in for the city recorder to read. Wasn't done properly, the vote ended up two to two to two for the people that had applied, so they had to do it right after that. But sometimes it would be a lot easier to just vote in private, that's not how it works. There are a lot of things that go into our decisions of who we appoint to some of these committees. Often, we like to have people, we, we know, we value the people who have gained some experience and have served in the past, and, and bring that to the job. We also value people who bring new ideas and who are stepping up for the first time to participate in their city. So there's that choice we face all the time. We, sometimes we have more people applying for a position than there are openings, and we have to make some choices. And sometimes we have fewer people applying than we have openings, and we know that we're going to have to go back and ask for more, which is exciting because we do get more input that way. But just know that this is, it's challenging for us sometimes. Try not to take things too personally. If we don't select you tonight, because maybe we chose someone who had already had, been in the position, understand that, you know, maybe for that particular situation, we're valuing experience over fresh ideas. On the other hand, if you've been in there for a while, and we, and we don't reappoint you, that may be the time where we say, it's time to broaden the scope of involvement in that group and get those fresh ideas in there. I'm sure everyone in the council has different criteria for how they vote, but know that we take no pleasure in rejecting people, but sometimes we have to. Okay, let's, let's do them one by one. We'll begin with appointment to the Audit Committee. I do want to make one correction on, on the sheet that we have. The list of the current, three current Audit Committee members, Dracilla Wyland, it should say Suzanne Bach rather than Suzanne Blogg, and Steve Johnson, those are the three current members. We have two terms on the Audit Committee that expire at the end of this year, two, a two-year term and one, one-year vacant, oh, wait, okay, two terms that expire this year and one term that expires 12/31/24, that's a vacant term. So a total of three. Have I got that right?
I think we put it on the, the screen.
Comprised of up to six members, so we have three people. So when Tammy calls your name, you can vote for three, up to three of these candidates.
So we'll also probably need to know which term you're wanting to appoint them to, as there are two terms that expire 2025 and one term that expires 2024.
All right, and let me get a feel for the council, would you rather choose the term right now, or whether, would you rather wait and see who gets elected and then deal with which person gets the longer term later?
Thank you. Does that make sense? So there's three. And if someone gets five votes, they're the top.
All right, so you're not going to indicate your choice of term when you vote, you're going to wait until we see the votes and then use that as the basis, the basis for the decision.
If the council agrees, we want to do it that way.
Okay, does that sound good? Let's, let's choose the people first, and then we'll get to the assigning which one to which term.
So.
Oh, are either of these, I don't see Gabrielle, I don't see Steve, and I don't see Jake. So neither of them is here, is anyone here to speak on their behalf? Did anyone request to do that?
No one has requested to speak, but I do show that we do have Gabrielle Blogg online if you're wanting to speak with her. And she is the only one that I see of those three that are online.
Okay, well, all right, let's give her that opportunity. Gabrielle Blogg, if you are watching and you would like to speak, you can use your raise hand feature on Zoom.
She has her hand up.
Okay.
We'll allow her to.
All right, thank you.
Gabrielle, you should be able to speak. Are you able to unmute yourself?
I'm so sorry, I just wanted to let you guys know that I really enjoyed working on the Budget Committee and am excited to have further opportunities to serve the city council. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I also want to be clear that we did notify all the applicants and let them know they're not required to be here tonight, so just want to make sure that, that we have that on the record.
Yes, whether they're here or not should not make any difference in our voting tonight. Okay, all right. So Tammy, if you'll go ahead and begin by calling the roll, and again, each person can vote for up to three.
Okay. Paper here. We'll start with Councilor Garlington. Gabrielle Blogg and Jake Meek.
Councilor Roberts.
Gabby, Steve, Jake.
So you're wanting, okay. Are you wanting that one, two, three? Or you're wanting all, all three?
Just all three.
Okay. Just want to confirm.
If we could, let's use the last names as they're printed on the ballot, and that'll maybe make it a little easier.
Councilor Cook. Blog, Meek, Johnson. Councilor Riekel.
Sorry, had to unmute myself, I, Blog and Meek.
Councilor Alexander.
Blog and Meek.
Councilor Huckabee.
Blog. And Meek.
Mayor Milch.
Blog, Johnson, and Meek. So Gabrielle Blogg and Jake Meek are appointed. That leaves one vacancy. Do we have a decision from the council on which terms we would like to appoint? Now, the terms that expired on 12/31/23, those will then be, oh, those are the two that will then be 12/31/25.
Correct.
Would you be willing to assign both of these newly elected people to the 12/31/25 terms?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I see nods from the council, so that's what it will be. So Gabrielle and Jake are appointed to terms ending 12/31/25. Item 13B is appointment to the Budget Committee. They, we have four terms on the Budget Committee, three terms that are expiring at the end of this year, and one vacant term that will expire 12/31/24. We have four, one, two, three, four, five current Budget Committee members. So some of them, oh. Three terms to expire, do we know who's, who's expiring?
At the bottom, at the bottom there, it'll show you the terms that are up for. On the.
Oh, on the screen there, thank you, I'm looking at the sheet on my, on my agenda, oh, you're, you're way ahead of us here, Tammy, thank you for giving that information and putting it right in front of me. Okay, so we have one vacant term. Nina Harrington, Gabrielle Blogg, and Joshua Smith are all on, were on the committee this year, oh, no, and, no, just those two, Nina Harrington and Gabrielle Blogg are on terms that expired this year. The Budget Committee, because we do a biennial budget, really does its work every two years. So whomever we were to appoint tonight, that committee would not really be meeting until January of 2025. So that presents us with one decision to make first, do we even want to do appointments tonight? Let me get some feel from the council on that issue.
I would say yes, that way they could prepare or watch or, you know, understand what they're doing, get involved, maybe come to council meetings.
Okay, so you, you like the idea that people have indicated an interest already, all right. Council Huckabee?
I say no.
You say no.
I think given as we have application, we have applicants for the open positions that I don't see a reason to punish them by not allowing them.
All right.
I, I have to agree with that. Jake, with, I'm sorry, with Luke.
All right, so, okay, I, this is one of those ones where we are required to have an equal number of citizen members of the Budget Committee as we have city councillors, and sometimes we've had difficulty getting all seven. I think it's important that we have seven and seven, so I will go along with those who say, since we have applicants, let's honor the integrity of their having applied and, and, and try to make a decision tonight. So we have two applicants, you may vote, actually, there are four positions, so you may vote for zero, one, or two of these.
Can I ask a question real quick? We have one term that expires the end of 2024. They do not meet until 2025, so it doesn't make sense to assign anybody to that vacant position. We still have other ones.
Mayor was saying.
We only have two applicants, and we have all these open positions. So we wouldn't need to fill this one, we don't have enough applicants to fill this one, is what I'm saying. They can have the other ones.
Okay, so when, if we make choices, we need to assign them to seats that will exist beyond 2024.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. And I think the two positions that are listed now as expiring 12/31/23, they would roll over to be 12/31, would it be 26?
2027.
2027, it's four-year terms, okay, all right, thank you.
So to be clear, there's only one term that will see the light of day here.
Yes.
Yes. So really, it would only be wise, or at least in my understanding, to make one appointment this evening.
Uh, no, I think we have, we have three total positions that are going to end in 27, so we can put two to those three positions, and that's.
I'm just looking at the options, it says we have a term to the term that expires in 2027, or to the vacant term that expires in 24.
But there's not a term, there are three.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
My apologies, thank you.
All right, are we all clear? Let's go ahead, Tammy, call the, call the roll.
Councilor Riekel.
I would say Fuller and Meek.
Councilor Alexander.
Fuller and Meek.
Councilor Huckabee.
Fuller and Meek.
Hang on, sorry. Councilor Cook.
Fuller and Meek.
Councilor Roberts.
Fuller and Meek.
Councilor Garlington.
Fuller and Meek.
Mayor Milch.
Fuller and Meek. Both are appointed to terms, we'll appoint them to the terms on line 18 and line 19, those are the ones ending, that will now end on 12/31/27. And we still have two vacancies, so we should, well, sometime in 2024, we'll seek two more people, okay? Oh, yes.
Will expire before the Budget Committee.
Yeah, that's true.
It would be wise to put out for one person.
We want to have our seven people when we start 2025. Okay, the next item, 13D, is Park and Recreation Board.
Uh, no, it's Community Center.
Oh, I skipped over one, hold on a second. We have a lot of tabs here. Okay, the Community Center Advisory Board. There are two four-year terms on the Community Center Advisory Board that will expire 12/31/23. Current members are Evelyn Johansson, Sylvia Kellner, Simona Gershson, I hope I didn't. Current members are Evelyn Johansson, Sylvia Kellner, Simona Gershson, I hope I didn't ruin that too much, Mindy Profsky, Roxanne McMullin, Josie Whitaker, and Maria Mitchell. The vacancies, we've have, we have three applicants, Sharon Howard, Janice Saban, and Josie Whitaker. Two positions, so vote for up to two of these. I know we had some requests to speak for some of the items on this agenda. Has that, has that come up yet?
That, that's coming up.
Okay, all right, very good. I wanted to make sure we didn't lose that. Questions or comments from councillors? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Counselor Cook.
Howard and Whitaker.
Counselor Huckabee.
Howard and Whitaker.
Counselor Riekel.
Howard and Whitaker.
Counselor Alexander.
Howard and Whitaker.
Counselor Garlington. Can you turn your microphone on, please?
My apologies, Howard and Whitaker.
Counselor Roberts.
Howard and Whitaker.
Mayor Milch.
Howard and Whitaker. Howard and Whitaker are elected to the two terms expir- expiring 12/31/27. Josie Whitaker is a, is a current member who wants to continue. Sharon Howard is an applicant who has experience as a residential councillor and worked in behavioral health care. I think she brings some, some good experience to, to this work. As the community, Community Center sort of expands what it does in the community. This is, this is a very good skill to bring to this job. All right, now we are on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
And we do have one individual that would like to speak on this one and the next one.
Okay. Why don't we start with that? We'll, we'll take our public comment first.
Tammy Stimple.
Hello, it's so nice sitting on this side. Don't envy your job. First, I, I forgot to put Planning Commission on my application. I didn't want to minimize my time there because it was super important and I'm very passionate about it. But I was also on Planning Commission. And when I sent, submitted my application, I did not realize the three people that are already sitting on Parks and Board are reapplying for their positions and to respect and honor their work, their hard work on that committee, I'd like to withdraw my application at this time. But I would still like to help in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, we have, this is the one, this is the, one of the most challenging one. Because as Tammy mentioned, we have several people who are already serving, who are applying to, to come back on. And we have several outstanding new candidates who are also interested in serving. So would you like to discuss this one at all? Share your thoughts on criteria for decision? Counselor Garlington.
Well, like Counselor Riekel, I, I, I don't know if you know this, but parks are kind of my passion.
Yes, we, we've heard evidence of that.
Just in case you all didn't know, I'm just a little passionate about the parks. But what, what I'm really excited about, even Chad Jacobs is laughing at me. What I'm really excited about is in the last six months, this Park Board, I, okay, let me go back and say a year. They've proven themselves with a fantastic park project up at Top Park. They've done some cleanup, uh, just the, the homework that they've done and come through with assures me that the projects that we are, are asking and tasking them with coming up, as, you know, we've heard in the last couple of months that we've got money coming through, we've got projects coming through. This group is a committed cohesive group and I would like to see them stay together. I know that we have other people that, you know, are coming through, but Mr. Mills didn't, he came in on an appointment midterm. And Ellen Farber, Farber, she's really proactive. She goes to the parks, she, every one of them, she goes to more parks than I do. I, I have, I, like I said, I just think, I, I would like to see this group stay together. I think they're cohesive. I think they work well together. They divide up the tasks, they get them done, and they do their homework for Mr. Canaparoli. And I, that just means a lot. When you sit in a group project and somebody doesn't bring their, bring their homework back done, it, it kind of, it's like, okay, now we gotta wait four more weeks. This group doesn't do that. I'm, I'm super impressed with what they do and being a person that was on Parks for a while. It's, it's just, I just really appreciate who they are and what they've done. So I, I just want you all to know that I support keeping this group together through our upcoming projects in the next couple of years.
All right, thank you for that input. Other comments?
Mine was just sort of the same thing when I was going through these and I was thinking about certain committee, you know, planning commissions, the big one, Parks and, I mean, and the people that are already passionate about it and still willing to do it again, their dedication and, and the job they've done, because we are flourishing in every aspect. I just, you know, I think that's a good thing to, to honor that dedication and passion.
I noticed too that several of the people who applied that are currently on the Parks Board are also very active in the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park, which again indicates a strong commitment to parks. But I've always, uh, for some time I've thought maybe we need to be sure that we don't have too much of an overlap there so that we can always have, uh, and I'm not saying that the Parks Commission has focused too much on that park because I don't believe they have. I think they've given fair consideration to all the parks in our system. But we kind of get, you know, double the value if we have some of these very committed people already working in one active capacity in the committee, community, and then have other people working in the other capacity. So that's just my thought on the matter. Counselor Cook, did you have a comment?
Um, really just a, maybe a question. So we find ourselves in the really enviable, enviable position of having more applicants than we have seats. Are, is the number of seats on the Parks and Recreation Board static? Is that something that we could consider or should consider? I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I'm just bringing it up because this is kind of a unique situation for us to.
You, you remember we changed our council rules this year and a few years ago, around the same time we were changing council rules, the council also made some changes in the rules regarding its boards and commissions. And one of them was, we had some that had different numbers of people on it and we felt it was important to get some uniformity there. So the decision we made at that time was seven members, kind of across the board. We, nothing prevents us from making a change. It would go against that particular sense of wanting to keep the same number each time. But I want to remind you of something else. At our meeting last month, at our work session last month, we talked about the formation of a, a Trees Board, either an ad hoc group or perhaps a permanent advisory committee to help us become part of Tree City USA. Uh, and I know that, you know, there's interest in having maybe an ad hoc group that would relate to our library, our new library, once it's built, to provide some more localized city input to that. And so we may be expanding, oh, and we're talking also about formation of a youth council. So we're, we may be expanding the number of advisory committees and groups that we have in the city. And at the time we're doing that, we may give consideration to including more people in one or the other, depending on the scope of their duties, as you've suggested here. This may be one where if parks are a key goal, maybe they need more personnel. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind. We're not going to do it tonight, but tonight our, our decision is just to choose from among those who have applied. Other comments or questions?
I, I just have one more.
Yes.
Jackie, can you, I know that Bruce is the Chair at Parks. Who's the, who's the second seat on that?
I don't have that information.
I think I got a letter from Bruce last year and he told me at that time that David Michael was the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Riekel, you are the council liaison. Do you want to weigh in on this one? Just on, on any aspect of what we've talked about tonight?
You know, this is a hard one for me because I, because I'm the liaison, I have gotten to see the work that the group is doing and you know, I'm conflicted personally because they are doing such wonderful work, but I think we have some really fantastic applicants as well. So, you know, I am, I'm struggling with this decision, to be honest.
All right, well, it, it's, you know, this is one of those things where, uh, oh, what's the expression? An abundance of, of, I forget, but.
Something like that.
There's a term somewhere that is escaping me right now. But, all right, we'll go ahead and, and make our votes and keeping in mind, as Counselor Cook reminded us, these are people who have already shown a, a good interest. Let's keep them in mind for possible future opportunities.
You bet.
All right.
Counselor Roberts.
I'm very pleased with the work of our sitting people, so I will move forward with continuing their terms.
So you have to name the names.
Faber, Hildreth, and Mills.
So it's like we're trying to make those a little bit bigger so you can see them. Well, maybe not. Okay, Counselor Alexander.
I also will go with Faber, Hildreth, and Mills, very pleased.
Counselor Cook.
This is a tough one. I know we don't, you know, always justify decisions, but I think this is a very difficult decision between experience, you know, within and outside of the existing committee. I was really impressed by Butler's experience that's outlined in their application. Harrington, I was very impressed with their performance and experience on the Budget Committee. And so my votes are Butler, Harrington, and Mills.
Butler, Harrington, and I'm sorry with the last.
And the last is Mills.
Mills. Counselor Huckabee.
Butler, Harrington, and Mills.
Counselor Riekel.
I also am very, very impressed with Butler's application and experience. So I am going to vote Butler, Hildreth, and totally diverting, gonna vote for Rockwell. Thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
Farber, Hildreth, and Mills.
Mayor Milch.
Butler, Hildreth, and Rockwell. So I'm counting four votes for Butler, five votes for Hildreth, five votes for Mills. No one else had more than three. So I believe our new Park Board members are Eric Butler and Bruce Hildreth will return and Justice Mills will return. Uh, those all three positions expire 12/31/27, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Eric Butler is new. He did, did a presentation to the Parks Board early part of the year regarding the work that he does with the Clackamas River Basin Council and then he's a riparian specialist there. Came here to our City Council at a work session, I believe, and also prepare, or, or regular, I mean, I can't remember which one it was, but gave us that update as well. So it, it always, I, I'm always impressed by how many people are there that care so much about our rivers and our waterways and who volunteer in a variety of ways and, and cleanups and plantings and all kinds of things regarding those programs. So that's exciting to have his involvement in our Parks Board. Uh, item 13, appointment to the Planning Commission.
And we have one speaker for that one as well.
Okay.
Tammy Stimple.
Me again. The only reason I'm sitting here is because I spent, I believe, 14 years on planning and three of those is Chair prior to becoming mayor. And I want you all to know that it's not an easy job. Mayor Milch knows that very well. It is incredibly technical. It is an incredible, incredible amount of reading, research. You have to have some kind of a background. The learning curve is just huge. So please, the city deserves people in that position that have the passion and the knowledge to make the decisions that set policy and land use for the city. They make quasi judicial decisions which are legally binding. Those people need to have the right information. They need to have the right knowledge to make those decisions. So please, just keep that in mind. Our city deserves people that know what they're doing on Planning Commission.
Thank you for that input. There is a, a section of our Gladstone Municipal Code which comes really out of the state law. There says no more than two voting members of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit as individual or be members of any partnership or officers or employees of any corporation that engages principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit. We have two of our current members who fall into that category, Andrea Langston and Jennifer Volbada. But neither of them are in a term that's expiring old. Oh, so it's, so it doesn't count as development if it's, if it's construction?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's like a semi-project manager.
Okay. But it's all right. No, I know it talks about developing of real estate for profit. So I, I've always thought he was in that category. So, so that means then, one of those, that we have one person in that category now, I guess. But it will not impact the decision we have to make tonight. We will not change those numbers by appointing any of the people who have applied for this tonight. Are there any other questions? Or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Garlington.
Natalie Smith is our Chair.
Your Chair, yes.
And who's our second on that? And he's not got his name in, does he?
His term does not expire.
And then Mr. Weiss was just appointed in January, so he's kind of ending his freshman term and we've got him up and running now.
Correct. He was asked to, he, he completed a, he completed my old term, I believe, that ended in 12/31/23. I resigned when I was elected and his, so he just completed one year of his term.
Okay.
Okay. All right, are we ready to vote? All right, Tammy, call the roll, please.
Counselor Huckabee.
Hartman and Weiss.
Counselor Cook.
Uh, Smith and Hartman.
Counselor Garlington.
Smith and Weiss.
Counselor Alexander.
Smith. Smith and Weiss.
Counselor Cook.
Didn't I just go?
Oh, I, I put it in the, I'm, I'm sorry. Counselor Riechel.
Hartman and Weiss.
Counselor Roberts.
Smith and Weiss.
And Mayor Milch.
Smith and Weiss. So I believe Smith and Weiss are reappointed to the Planning Commission.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. I appreciate you.
One more?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, Counselor Alexander just commented, it's the hardest committee to serve on. Um, as, as former Mayor Stimple said, uh, it, it, there is a learning curve there and, uh, also the city, uh, honestly, sometimes invests a good deal of money in training people for these land use hearings. Uh, and, um, so, uh, experienced people are valued.
And we have a busy twenty twenty-four work plan for the Planning Commission.
I'm happy to see there were that many people interested. I think that's one of the, uh, biggest numbers of people, uh, asking to serve there. Uh, finally, we have appointments to make to our Traffic Safety Advisory Board. Uh, this is one where we've seen, seen some turnover and some expiring terms. Uh, four four-year terms that expire twelve thirty-one twenty-three and one vacant term that expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Um, one of the terms that expired twelve twenty-one twenty-three was vacated by Yvonne McNeil, who was hired as the city's Community Services Officer, and the other vacant term that expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four was vacated by Alexandra Hernandez. So, current members are Mindy Prosky, Nathan Page, John Kilstrom, Carleen Cox, and Andrew Labonte. And we have three applicants, Gabrielle Blog, John Kilstrom, and Tim Large, and there are a total of five, oh, four positions. Okay.
Right.
Uh, four four-year terms and one vacant term.
I believe it should have been three.
Three applications for?
We have three applications. Three terms will expire twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven and one term will expire twelve thirty-one of twenty-
Ah, okay. So three expiring plus, okay. So there's still four positions, three people for four positions.
Correct.
So you may vote for, uh, up to three of these.
Okay. So how many are expiring in twenty-seven? How many seats do we have open that will expire in twenty-seven?
Uh, the new seats are through, there would be three of those. The ones that currently say twelve thirty-one twenty-three will then expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
And we have John Kilstrom is running again for his seat or has put in an application for his seat. Andrew Labonte is apparently done, and then the third seat is vacant at this point.
Correct.
Thank you.
And there is a vacancy, vacant seat, uh, that will expire twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So also, we had appointed, uh, Ms. Blog to the Audit Committee. That's not going to be any sort of conflict, correct? She could serve on both?
Yes, she can.
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready?
All right, we are ready.
Counselor Alexander.
Log, Kilstrom, Large.
Counselor Roberts.
Log, Kilstrom, Large.
Counselor Huckabee.
Same.
Log, Kilstrom, Large.
Correct.
Counselor Garlington.
Log, Kilstrom, Large.
Counselor Riechel.
Log, Kilstrom, and Large.
Counselor Cook.
Blog, Kilstrom, and Large.
Mayor Milch.
I'll also vote for all three, all of whom are elected, appointed. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
That still leaves us whether we appoint anyone to the term that expires next year.
Okay, um.
Would be my opinion that we push them all towards the twenty twenty-seven position, but I think we need to clarify that.
All right. Uh, do you agree, counsel, with Counselor Roberts that, uh, the three, the three people who put their names up now should all get the, uh, longer terms? Okay, I'm seeing heads nod. So those are all appointed to, uh, the positions that expire, that will expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven, the current twenty twenty-three positions. All right, that leaves one more vacancy for us to, uh, to get and we'll, uh, along with the budget, oh, whichever committee it was, we still had some vacancies. I believe it was budget. We'll, we'll put the word out. Okay. All right. That concludes our regular agenda. Uh, also including in tonight's agenda is a city, preliminary city council agenda planning document. You can see all the things that are coming up next year. Uh, we will be getting a report from our city administrator soon about the results of the staff retreat, uh, that happened last week, which is, uh, which will help us to get a, you know, a good eye on where we are as far as our council goals. Uh, now in our second, the end of our second, uh, semester, uh, six-month period, uh, half a year, uh, that will be coming up in January. So going back to the regular agenda, um, is there any business carried forward?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. I understand we had requests for business from the audience.
We have one, and that is Glenda Shearer.
Okay, you can come forward here. And we have a, a three-minute timer and, uh, oh, and push the button and it will stay on after you push it once. It's not on yet. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Um, my name is Glenda Shear, and I reside in Gladstone. Uh, if there are reporters who wish to get in touch with me about my public comment tonight, I can be contacted via email at unheardparents@gmail.com. I'm a mom, a teacher, and a mandatory reporter. What brings me before you tonight is to share what my family and I experienced with the Gladstone Police Department when I reported the physical and emotional abuse of my five-year-old son by an instructional assistant at GCCF. I'm also speaking up on behalf of others who don't have the agency that I have. In fall of twenty twenty-two, my five-year-old started kindergarten. Immediately, his behavior changed. He started scratching his face, hitting his face, having daytime accidents, and trouble sleeping at night, all of which were completely out of character for him. All of which can, are also signs of child abuse. In addition, my son made statements when he would wake up at night sobbing. He'd say, Mama, I'm afraid someone's gonna take me away from my family and give me to a new family. That is not something that he heard on Popitul. That's not something that he heard in our home. That is something that he heard at school. On September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the district reported an incident to me. But their report did not match up with the bruises and the trauma that I saw. My son had bruises under both arms, on his collarbone, and on his forearm. Uh, in November, I would learn that there were two additional incidents that the district withheld from me and hid from me. According to the Gladstone Police Manual and Carrie's Law, the Gladstone Police Officer investigating had the responsibilities and duties to do the following. One, immediately cross-report to DHS and Oregon Department of Education because it happened in a public school. Two, arrange for a forensic interview. Three, take pictures. Four, arrange for family and child support and advocacy to support a victim. He did none of those. Your Gladstone Police Officer did none of those. He did not look at video or collect it. He accepted undated, unsigned statements. His investigation was lackluster and apathetic. Um, there was no robustness to us. He never met me or my son. Instead, information that I gave to him was reported to this district and they changed their, uh, statement. I'll try to hurry to finish up here. Um, this last year has been hell. What I'm asking is that I urge the city council to short policies so that people who, employees who violate policies are terminated. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I can.
What did you turn that in?
Yeah, I, it, it has lots of crossouts. I think, I won't submit it.
You can email it to me.
Yes.
All right. Administrator Betts, uh, the policy is that council does not respond to, um, uh, public comment, uh, from, on, uh, business from the audience, except to ask clarifying questions. But I wondered if, if you or, or, uh, Attorney Jacobs, uh, had a response.
I'm, I'm happy to respond to that, and I'm very sorry for what Ms. Shear and her family are going through. I will share that I met with Ms. Shear on November twenty-second, right before Thanksgiving with the police chief, and she shared the information that she provided you tonight. And currently, I'm doing an internal review to make sure that we followed all of our policies. Ms. Shear is aware that I was getting back to her this week regarding that information, but since she spoke tonight, I think it's important, uh, to share a little bit of that. We did have the Gladstone Police Department Major Crimes Team Investigator, the City Prosecutor, a Senior Deputy District Attorney from the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office, and an outside police chief review all the materials relevant to this case that started in September of twenty twenty-two and reached the conclusion that conduct was not criminal in nature and warranted no further investigation. The city attorney and I reviewed the situation and agreed with all the law enforcement officials that no further action is necessary. In regards to notification of the Department Human Services, we acknowledge that we should have notified them in a more timely manner. They were notified, but not immediately. Police Chief Schmarber addressed this internally through updated administrative processes, and we're confident that the process issue has been fixed. Ms. Shear has also requested public documents, and tomorrow in my response to her, I will provide her the information that she is, um, asking about with that. City Attorney Jacobs, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think you summarized that well, City Administrator Betts, and happy to answer questions, but I think the main point is, is that, uh, we all definitely feel for what the family's going through and are empathetic towards their, uh, situation. Um, but at the same time, we can only go so far as the law goes, and, uh, to the extent that, you know, we have a higher standard in the criminal process, there is a cross-report to DHS, and if they feel that there's something there that they want to independently do, they certainly have the authority to do that as well. So we're, we are not the only stop. DHS can still be involved, and, you know, we would defer to them for sort of a different standard of, of judging this than what we have at the criminal level.
May I clarify?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Your, your time has ended. Um,
Won't let me clarify.
They won't. They won't. Um, so, thank you. Um, our next item on our agenda is business from the council. Let me see, we'll start down at this end with Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot to update this month. Um, lots going on, but, you know, it's holiday season, so. I wish everybody a great holiday. I hope you be safe and enjoy time with your loved ones.
Counselor Alex, I'll just go down the line. It's easier.
Uh, it's still just, uh, yeah, figuring that one. Um, I am not much either, except I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Counselor Riechel.
Um, yeah, I don't have a whole lot to report either because we didn't have parks meeting last night, but, um, did want to extend congratulations again to our new officer Dornfeld. Um, that was great. So we're excited to have you. Congratulations. I'm not sure if he's still there, but just to go on record and also extend happy holiday wishes to everyone. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Cook.
Um, just a quick note to congratulate, um, everyone who is appointed to boards committees, um, tonight. Uh, very excited that we had as much interest as we did, um, and I want to also appreciate those who applied but, um, who were not chosen. I hope that you continue to apply and stay involved. Um, I also want to appreciate Gabrielle Blog, John Kilstrom, and Natalie Smith for consistently showing up to council meetings. Um, no decisions and like, nothing happens in a vacuum, right? Like parks touches every other part. Um, planning touches every other part of the city. So, um, I think you guys are really modeling what engaged citizenship looks like, and, um, it's kick ass. So thanks.
Counselor Roberts.
I think the only thing was just, as we saw so many applications come through, uh, that's very exciting. Um, as we look through them, we have the option on them that you can select multiple ones. So you would like to apply for the audit as well as the parks. As I looked through that more, I, you know, I kind of wanted to gauge other interests, but I'd like to remove that option and say, should you like to submit for both, that option still exists, but you submit two different applications. Because I think that the reason you're applying for those is different, and it ness, can't always necessarily be articulated in the same application. And so I don't want to limit anyone's options, but I'd like to see that we don't just have one blanket form for that. Outside of that, happy holidays. Thank you, everyone.
All right, that's a helpful suggestion. Thank you. Counselor Garlington.
Well, I'd just like to say, I like that suggestion, especially because if somebody had a few sentences to say why they were passionate about why they were applying for that particular spot, it would give them, you know, this application and this application to do so. So I hear what you're saying, and I like that. I too would like to thank everyone who applied for a position. Congratulations to those that were appointed. Um, we on this council have been on boards. We, uh, and, and we understand the commitment that it takes to show up to meetings and do your homework. So thank you for doing that and good luck in the next coming years. Um, I would also like to say that, uh, the Gladstone School District is seeking a new superintendent. I would hope that the community has an eye on this as we transition into a new era in our school district. Lot going on over there, and, um, there's a lot of things that the city council and the school district are going to be coming up against to poss, not coming up against, but possibly collaborate together and doing, and, um, I think it'll be really exciting and a lot of good things happening this next year. So with that, the Clackamas, uh, County Library Meeting, we had a library meeting, and Natalie could probably, if somebody wanted to reach out to her. Um, there's a lot of talk on funding and where the capital funding is going. Um, and, uh, the, the, yeah, they're doing, uh, some regrouping on the current IGA for the Clackamas County Advisory District. And it's a big thing because it's a lot of money and a lot of tax money coming from all the cities that pay into the Clackamas County Library System. So it's a big deal, and it's a lot of big words. Um, you know, a, all I can say is maybe watch the videos of the meetings if you're really interested in what's going on. Fortunately, Gladstone is not affected like many of the other cities. However, there is a lot going on. Like I said, lots of dollars. Um, I, I want to say that, that on November twentieth, Tuck Willa Springs held a beautiful Thanksgiving dinner. The group that I work with were invited to join the community there and share in the dinner. We brought dishes to share, but the main meal and desserts were prepared and served and provided by the staff and service directors there. There were over fifty people in attendance, plus the additional meals for residents choosing, that choose to eat in their rooms. Ryan, the residential director there, put together a great event that was clearly appreciated by all. And I want to give my thanks to the Turners, the Ikesteds, the Presle, the Prebles, the Stimples, and those families reach out and really care and help all the time when I ask. Um, I'd like to thank you for your continued support working towards making Tuck Willa a better part of our community. On December twenty-first, um, we're holding a Christmas celebration there, and if anyone can donate two dozen cookies, we're doing, uh, a cookie bar for people to come and gather a box of their choosing right after their supper that we're providing. So if anybody- So if anybody out there would like to do that, email me on my city email, and I'll move you to my personal email, but that's the best way to get ahold of me. Um, Mayor Milch, I listened to the C4 meeting. I appreciated your comments on finance. They were clear and concise, and I understood everything. Um, and it would be really good, though, to have a list of all the funding options that everybody brought up. I think to, I, I appreciated all the different ideas, but it would be great if you could get that group to pull all of those ideas together so that they can be submitted in one clear list. But I think you guys are all on the right track, so thank you for, I know that's a lot of work and a lot of talk and a lot of thought process, so thanks for all of that. Um, like the rest of you here, I attended the Joint School Board Meeting that we had here. Our staff did a phenomenal job putting that together. It was good to meet the new faces at the school district, and we also got to hear, like I said, about the upcoming projects that the city and the school district may have future opportunities to collaborate on. I did get over to the holiday market on Saturday. We saw some, some familiar faces, bought some items, and met a neighbor that I'm hoping to get to sew with after the holidays, so that was a lot of fun. The staff at the community center did a really good job putting that event together. They're so passionate about it. They're, they were out there in holiday uh, garb, you know, just welcoming everybody that walked into that building. It was a great feeling to be in there. And then I did get over to the tree lighting event, as Mayor Milch was there also. The carolers were great, the, the fire trucks were really exciting, the kids got really excited about that. And it was happy to, I was happy to see a really good gathering of neighbors last year was, we were just coming out of COVID and, you know, I think a lot of people were a little nervous about it, but this year it was really good. Again, it was just really good to see everybody there. Um, so on that, I want to thank everybody for the Christmas lights. Uh, we have good Christmas lights up in our neighborhood, and um, I noticed the senior facility buses that come around our neighborhood. So to know that we're on their route, that's kind of a really good feeling and, and kind of fun to see those. There's some big buses, but it's fun to see those. So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday, and I ask that you all please travel safe and sober.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, it was a joy to uh, to plug in the lights on the holiday tree. We've continued that tradition. Um, and uh, but interestingly enough, it was uh, let's see, 2017, six years ago, my then 12-year-old grandson was doing an Eagle Scout project and uh, came up with the idea of, of putting a Christmas tree in the, in the uh, Memorial Garden there outside the, what was then the senior center. Uh, then Mayor Stempel paid for the tree. Uh, then, not yet a counselor, uh, Greg Alexander, but always willing to help Greg Alexander, drove me out to Silverton to buy the tree, uh, and we brought it back and planted it. Uh, it did not thrive as we had hoped, but the Seventh Day Adventist uh, group helped plant a new tree this past year. And uh, the lights are, you know, a symbol, as I said in my comments, of, of the hope and the sense of community that we have. So I'm glad that tradition is continuing. Um, your reference to C4 and funding, there are so many different C4 committees and some committees. I'll have to go back and watch the meeting myself to see what it was that I said that you appreciated, but I know that we were talking. Oh, okay, okay. Oh, my, you mean my testimony there at the, with the subcommittee, uh, about doing for Veronica?
Well, it was the, in the C4 meeting, they were all talking about tolling, so.
Yes. All right, well, uh, we have, we have a tolling subcommittee, we have a metro subcommittee, we have C4 that works on a lot of things, and lately has looked at funding for supportive housing services. And some of that funding is very likely to find its way into Gladstone to help with our food pantry if our applications for that go well. So uh, I, it, I think maybe what I said uh, that you're remembering is that um, one of the things I've, I've noticed about Clackamas County is that there's a big advantage to being a big county that has a lot of small cities. Each city knows what works best within its boundaries, and the scale of things that we work on are more appropriate to solving some of these problems at a local level. Uh, Multnomah County will always have the challenge of being a, a big county that is mainly one big city. And uh, their issues and problems, although all of us share some of the same things, are much harder to solve at that scale. Uh, and so I'm glad to be in a city that sort of has fixed boundaries and uh, a, enough people in it that we can uh, really come up with some good, appropriate solutions for the scale of our own community. Speaking of that, um, you know, we elected a governor last year who's very committed to changing policy across the state in terms of housing. Um, there's a book I read, written by a, a housing policy expert from California who talked about uh, three things that are important in providing affordable housing to people. One is supply, one is stability, and one is uh, subsidy. Uh, here with the um, the, the housing we have, uh, Tuck Willa Springs, that subsidized housing for people who could not afford housing of their own without government assistance, and we're providing that. And uh, we passed uh, legislation this past year uh, on allowing middle housing options for people. And I got a report from uh, Administrator Betts from our, from our planning department about how many people are now beginning to take advantage and seeking to either do accessory dwelling units or to expand an existing lot into multiple units, uh, maybe a duplex or a triplex. Some of that is coming to fruition to, to help it with our local housing supply. And the final part of that is housing stability. Um, and I sent you an email last week to let you know that I was invited to uh, hear Governor Kotek on her tour of uh, Clackamas County, which is part of her, to her effort to get to all the counties in the state to talk about some of these issues that she's most concerned about. And we met at uh, the Two Rivers Homeowners Co-op. The former Gladstone, I don't know, I don't know what it was called before, but it is the Mobile Home Community that I spoke about at our Clackamas Cities Dinner a couple months ago. Where uh, the owner of that community had been owned by the same family for some 60 years, had an offer to, to sell it, and decided to give the residents the opportunity to buy in and become home owners. And through some good programs that the state has and, and private nonprofit agencies and others, the, the homeowners took that leap of faith, bought their own homes, and the results have been amazing. And the governor was here with her staff to listen to some of these success stories, and this is where she chose to come in Gladstone, to our success story of housing stability for our community. Uh, that, that place could have been bought by someone who, who wanted to tear it down and put in a high-rise or some other form of housing close to the river. Might have provided greater supply, but it would have put maybe 130 or so people out of their homes. So uh, that's, uh, you know, particularly at this time of the year, it's good to think about those successes and uh, those, those things that we do. Uh, we are a diverse community economically, um, uh, racially, and if you want to use that way, and age-wise. But the, the economic diversity of this community is one of the things that distinguishes us from some of our neighboring communities. And I'm glad that we enact policies that try to recognize that not everyone can afford a single, can afford a single-family home. Not everyone can afford uh, a, a luxury car or a new car. Uh, we need to provide transportation opportunities and housing opportunities that benefit our community. And, and I'm glad that uh, I had a chance to meet the governor in person. I didn't tell you about it in advance because I'm not, wasn't allowed to. They, they kind of keep her agenda secret. But um, I'm glad that it appeared on the front page of the Oregonian on Sunday, and if you want to read that, you'll learn more about uh, what she did in other parts of the state as well. All right, that's all I have for tonight. Happy holidays, however you celebrate them. Uh, this is our last scheduled meeting of this year, so I will see everyone in January. Uh, we will begin with uh, you know, new, not new goals, but uh, a new effort uh, to uh, double down on the goals that we've made and to uh, improve uh, and uh, you know, continue the progress we've made on them for the rest of the year. Thank you to staff who participated tonight. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we are adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you.